Mr. Mayor, sir? We're having a little technical difficulty if we could buy a member here. Thank you.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. City council chambers will be open to the public. All are welcome to attend this meeting. Social distancing and screening will be enforced. Any member of the public wishing to comment may do so at the meeting. Citizens may also submit their comments in writing to cityclerk@cityofbradenton.com or voicemail by calling nine four one nine three two nine four three seven. All comments must be received by Tuesday, October thirteenth at three. Mayor and council may not receive your comments before the meeting is not received by this deadline. You know, as always, we begin our deliberations from invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation that was brought to us this morning, Pastor H. Clark Edwards, First United Methodist Church of Bradenton. Pastor, please stand. Morning.
Morning. Let's pray. What a great day it is, oh God, that you've made. We are just so blessed in so many ways in this community. We're thankful for the work of this, the commissioners here and those who give themselves in so many ways to serve the citizens of this community. We, we thank you, God. We thank you for the citizens of Bradenton and what a great city it is and how you have blessed us with wonderful weather and we're thankful, we do pray for those who have been ill from this COVID virus. We continue to pray for families who are hurting and the passing of loved ones. We, we pray for healing across this land. That those lives that have been touched by this virus will find healing and hope. And we thank you again for all the blessings that you give us for our families, for our friends, for, for this great community and for those who serve this community. We thank you for the workers of this community and law enforcement and, and, and all the other areas that make this such a great city and for their labor, we give you thanks. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tell them in order, Ms. Boshia.
Good morning, all. We have no proclamations this morning, but we do have a presentation. The Transform Twenty Forty-Five Long Range Transportation Plan from the Sarasota Manatee MPO, and I believe Lee Holt is here to provide the, the presentation. Or not?
Is Betty from the MPO here?
Good.
Okay, we had set it up for her yesterday, so.
Ms. Boshia will do this at a later meeting.
I think we can move on.
Before the meeting, citizen comments, anyone who wishes to speak to the council on any agenda item or non-agenda item. One person signed up. Who, who that is? Want to swear on, swear on ben, please?
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the factual statements and representations which you are about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
Yes. All right. Keenan Rooton, Nineteenth Fifteenth, Eleventh Avenue East. As this, I guess, regime or coming up on November third comes to an end, we're still upset and still not pleased about the Bradenton Housing Authority. We've been fighting this battle for the last two, I don't know, two or three years, even goes back longer than that. And then you, I know you, you all been seeing me for the last months, over and over and over. We just want, after November third, we just want a little bit more attention to details with that and the safety of our people in these neighborhoods. Nineteenth Street Court East is still a nightmare. I don't know, I know some have been out. We've had the police department out there. And it's just troublesome. It's very troublesome. But we hope going forward that this relationship between Bradenton Housing Authority and the City of Bradenton can maybe come together. We've done everything right, especially the younger generation coming down here, speaking up, even the older generation as well, but seems like nothing's getting done on that front. Not even returning emails. This blatantly being ignored. So after November third or twenty twenty-one, we hope to hit a reset button with that and try to bring us together a little bit more. A little disappointing in that because we do live there. We don't want to become hostages in our own neighborhood. And that's kind of what we've become. And I don't know, maybe we just, I know in my fraternity, we say getting round to it. Maybe if you guys get round to it, something will be done. But I'm only one voice and we'll keep, keep trying to fight that battle. But you'll hear about it when a wreck happens or something, somebody dies again, you'll hear about it and then we'll just roll it over again. We don't want to become the City of Bradenton that eats their own young. We want to be transparent, be progressive in a lot of matters there. But that parking over there is hideous. I've done everything I can do, talked to the CEO, director, executive director, but then I get ignored. So, you know, I probably would ignore me too if it's only me, one person going down there doing something. So just going forward, just remember that. We want a little bit more transparency with that. Even we're to the point where we might bust up in a few meetings they have and just see what's going on as the people. And we're fully prepared to do that. So just going forward, we want a little bit more respect in the neighborhood. And we want our elected officials to hold them accountable. Yeah, you're not, that's not your entity, but we still make appointments to that board. I know how that goes. Something going wrong, we make appointment and then something changed at the top. That leader is gone or ousted or whatever. That's how that works. I've seen it on national government. I've seen it on state government. So thank you for your time and we're looking for real change after November third.
Thank you, Keenan.
Mr. Mayor.
Chris Callahan.
Just on that front, a couple of things have happened. I've had discussions with Ellis Mitchell. Over there, we talked about the potential of parking, you know, and the spaces that have been talked about. At the end, we also, Jim and I have looked at a plan that would, at a minimum, on the west side, and we're going to be prepared to try to bring it forward here, not too distant future, on the west side of Nineteenth Street Court East, there is right-of-way available in there to be able to make parallel parking along that side, which instead of then parking on the street would at least widen the street area for accesses and things like that. So we've looked at that as a potential. I've requested that Ellis Mitchell come in here and present to you, and he has agreed to give an update of the Housing Authority in total, have a whole presentation about basically reintroducing him to y'all and the Housing Authority to y'all because if you don't hear about all their projects and you don't understand everything that's going on, I think it's important for you to get to know that as well as their financial requirement to give us their financial statements at the end of the year. So we are moving on that front to make sure those things are all taken care of. It will probably be after the first of November so that they're in here giving a presentation, but I said I'd like a presentation in front of this board and they have accepted that.
Anybody else who?
And Jim, I think during a workshop or when we come up, can actually present the plan that he's shown, which is just a, an alternative for us to be able to look at some things on Nineteenth Street Court East.
The other point with the Housing Authority is we have very limited authority as to their action.
And they, they have decided there was a lone person who decided that they wanted to be able to come forward and serve as a resident. We should be getting that name very soon as, I have the name, but be actually being presented to us in the form of the resident member of their board.
Okay. Anyone else who wishes to address the council? Anyone else? Hearing none. Ms. Boshia.
Yes, next we have the consent agenda. We're asking for approval of items A through J.
Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to ask that items H and I be pulled from the consent agenda.
Second.
H and I?
Yes.
H and I. Chair, want to take a motion on?
That leaves items A through G and J.
Move to approve items A through G and J.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Ready discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Board one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Consent agenda items A through G and J. Are approved, votes five to zero. Ms. Bird?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think in lieu of the discussions we've had on the body cams and the discussions we've had on the, I guess, the whole project, I just felt the need that we should have some discussion and have it off a consent agenda. So at this time, you know, I guess we could take one after the other, H and then I.
So what would you like to do?
We'd like to have some discussion on it.
Okay.
Item H is certainly what council asked at the last council meeting, that presentation be brought forward as to how to be able to pay for the particular body cams for the, for the current year of two thousand and twenty-one, since it was done so late in the budget process that if we were, seemed like the desire was to move forward once some sort of policy was brought forward, so that they wanted to know. So based on your discussion to make sure that we had it brought forward, we are bringing that forward, that, this piece here. At that point, I discussed that it would probably be an option to move cars out of the budget. That was going to be the easiest way to make sure that the money associated with personnel could be done, not, yeah, with the personnel could be done. In this instance, this is showing you how that would be done. We would take the funding out of the, out of, from the three vehicles, move that into the personnel cost, purchase the three vehicles, which is an accepted purchase out of the sales tax for, for public safety vehicles. We wouldn't have to do a budget adjustment associated with that because there is already money allocated. It would just need to be known that that's where we're purchasing those vehicles from is the sales tax money. So the, the financial impact, if, if you so desire, the recommendation was yes, this is a way to get it done in concert with the other piece which they had indicated, which is the other item, which is being able to actually purchase the cameras with forfeiture funds. So that for the year two thousand and twenty-one, this is exactly how it can happen.
And, Mr. Mayor, also, I guess, in discussion of that, it's been so much, it's been said that, I know I'm part of this council and I guess, I guess information or misinformation that we're looking out to defund the police. Defund. We've done everything absolutely possible, and this is one item. I just felt that it was under the consent agenda. And it needs to be known that no one, and I'm looking at five different council people, I know will be going through some changes as we go into the general election, but in no way, and I just don't want anything of misinformation going out there that this council is talking anything about defunding the police department. And here we are today, we're going to make this approval. I'm going to approve this. And like I said at the last meeting, we can't afford not to fund this. But I, I just want to, you know, you get misinformation out there and shame on anybody that's associated with that misinformation. It's not good for our cities, it's not good for our communities, it's not good for building trust. Thank you.
Sanders.
Question for Carl. I understood last meeting we had about three weeks ago, there was four hundred thousand dollars in a transportation fund, but I thought, I recall that you were saying that we were going to use some of that money toward this, this purchase, and I don't see that in there. You've actually just rolled it into the police budget?
No, what I've done is, in, in their fiscal administration, they have vehicles that they purchase.
Police department.
Police department does.
Right.
Take those out of that line item and move that money.
Move this, so you did, you just moved it from?
Up to personnel.
Right, so it didn't, it didn't have any net effect on, on the purchase of these?
No.
Right.
We will then buy those cars out of the sales tax fund, and there's already money.
So it was just supplementing the, the police department so that they could have the net offset of the, the in-car camera?
They can have the offset of the in-car camera.
And the hundred and fifty-one thousand?
And they will be able to buy the cars that they need and be able to do the personnel side of the body cameras. And the only impact will be moving those three cars out of the police budget and into the half-cent sales tax budget.
So you will be increasing the police budget by?
No, the police budget is not increased. The-
Because you're replacing it?
We're taking, we're, it's a, it's a wash within the department because we're using the funds that were for cars to go to personnel.
All right.
If we didn't have another place to buy them, then it would be an impact, but we have another place to be able to buy them from.
So we're going to do away with in-car cameras?
Um, not, not initially. We will, I think, for the long term is what, what the presentation shows.
What is the long term?
Years three, four, two, three, four, and five, I think, was the discussion point.
So how are we, how are we? Year two, you've got eighty-two thousand for the in-car cameras, so if you're not doing that, how do you, how do you, how do you have that credit?
I think that's where she shows the offset in year two, three, and four, and five.
Let me just clarify, so the in-car cameras that are currently in the budget right now, that money is going to be used to purchase the associated phasers. Initially, we were going to use forfeiture seizure money for phasers, but we shifted and took on the bigger burden of the cameras. We can't afford to buy both because when we get the body worn cameras, we no longer need in-car cameras, so we're shifting that funding to finalize the second part of our phaser purchase. Then going forward, the assumption would be that that seventy to eighty thousand, eighty-five, that consistently, we saw each year to improve, that we, it's a, we don't necessarily add the cameras, but we have to rotate them off because of their lifespan. They pretty much rotate out with the cars. That money will be used for body worn cameras, so yes, we are phasing out those in-car cameras. We're going to maintain the ones that we have there now. Some of our cars will have cameras, in-car cameras, for the next five years. You know, in a perfect world, it's great to have both, but I don't know that it's necessary because the body worn cameras at least catch the front end as much as you would need. The only thing it doesn't do is catch the, the back end, and that helps just with accident investigation, so.
So I hear you say that you're changing year one, you're not using the whole hundred and fifty-one thousand from the forfeiture?
No, no, that's, no, we're still using a hundred and fifty-one thousand to buy body cams. What you don't see in the year one is an offset for the, for the-
In-car camera?
In-car cameras. The, the money that's currently in the budget for in-car cameras is going to be used for the phaser program.
Okay. So the other question, that's all the questions I have on the financing end of it. So it's, it's one point two five million dollars total over five years. Nick, cost of the city, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars divided by five, so about two hundred, or about hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year. I, I don't have a problem with that, but I always said that we need policy before purchase. And so the policy to me is a bigger issue, not that I really want to debate this because I, I think from your perspective, it's non-debatable. But I did see your new proposal that you emailed to us, and I did compare them. I didn't see that many changes. Did you, I don't know if you'd like to speak to those changes of how the procedures are on, on body cameras, whether they're turned on and off, when they're on and off, how do you, you know, you?
I think our policy is very specific. Is it all out? It's, it's about fourteen pages. It has the exclusions. It follows federal law, it follows state law. It's consistent with model policies around the nation. It's consistent with policies around the state. It was created in conjunction with the PBA, who signed off on it just last week. Policies are never, they're never stagnant. The final policy today can always be tweaked tomorrow as long as it doesn't impact the discipline process. If it impacts the discipline process, then I need to reach out and, and connect with the union and let them know what my intentions are. I think I already found a typo yesterday when I was looking at it again. But thankfully, we have two more months to work out any kinks, particularly when we get our cameras and we start rolling them out. So I feel our policy accomplishes everything that this community would want with regards to transparency, with regards to obligation of the officers to use them for the purpose that they were put on their bodies. And I think it's going to be a game changer for us in a variety of ways when it comes to citizen complaints. And again, I'm going to use that word one more time when it comes to transparency. We, we're hoping that the two people that we bring on can support that program. We look around the, the state and try to get a feel for the increase and request for footage. If it doesn't wind up being the case, I'll be showing back up, but I really think it's going to do a lot for our agency. The prices come down on them considerably, but, and I think we did some great negotiated, negotiations here, and I'm confident that we've got a good product for the best possible price that we could, better price than a lot of other agencies.
Thank you. Yeah, and in your, you do show that there is no disciplinary issues with that, that you're not using it for discipline of your police department, which is a good thing. Which I think, you know, they obviously would want that, I would. What about, back to the finance, what about the contract for this? Do you have the contract? Is this final? Is this something that will be brought to us or just, just operationally done by your department?
So the contract is under review right now. We've made our changes. We're submitting it back. You know, legal jargon, that type of stuff. I, I believe when we purchase it, it may come back for a final signature, but we're, we're in that right now.
Is that, is anything we need to look at or probably not?
It's, everything is spelled out and what we've provided you, what they're going to provide.
Put the five-year contract with a, a renewable for probably another whatever term at that time?
Yes, sir.
Right, okay. And so we've appropriated this out by year from your schedule. Mr. Callahan?
We've, we have not appropriated year two, three, four, and five.
Right.
That is what the-
But that's the proposal, yeah, we would have to-
We will know what it costs us to make sure in, in the budget future years, how we handle that, yes.
I, I like, like Mr. Bird too. I, I don't like these things politicized. And this has been over politicized, which concerns me. And if, if, if it's a big concern to other council members, I'd be willing to table it till after the election, but otherwise I would, I can go either way.
Mr. Roll.
Yeah, I got a question. Carl, so on the consent agenda is the funding question.
Could you pull your microphone down, please? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, so.
Microphone.
Microphone.
Oh. Okay.
Air and aids.
So on the consent agenda is a funding proposal with the motion to approve the recommended funding plan and then the forfeiture funds request, no recommended approval. There's this, and then, so we have a whole nother, a whole nother item here, which is the policy. Is approval of the consent agenda items, is that approval of the body camera program, or can it be interpreted by someone as approval of the body camera program because the, the, the policy is not on the agenda?
All, all we were asked to do is to bring back the mechanism for funding this, which we, which, what we did. We didn't want to put it on the agenda at all until such time as you guys had had the opportunity to see the policy. We know that the policy was distributed. At that point, it was, our idea is okay to bring at least this piece forward for your approval.
Good, so that, that, that is what I assumed. So this, this today is only approval of the possible funding, but not the program itself because we still have the policy to talk about.
I don't know when you get into policy that's, you know, determining the actual policy as opposed to saying, yes, you've seen it and you don't have any huge objections to it. I don't, you know, that's, that's all. From, from a perspective of, of how that sits with council and, and the police department and the mayor are, are different scenarios.
All I need to know is, am I approving a program lock, stock, and barrel right now or just a funding source? That's all I need to know.
If, if the, the policy is established by the police department, not by the city council.
So the question is?
The question is if you approve the funding, then we'll move forward. The chief and, and her people that she talks with, if we need to change that policy, do, but that's the purview of the police department.
So, so then my vote right now is not just the funding. My vote right now is for the entire program.
Yes.
As is, with no discussion about policy.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, then I have to ask about the policy. Because if we're going to commit a million dollars, the one thing that I've read, and I only have eleven pages of policy, is there?
That's what it is.
Okay. What, what it doesn't cover in here, unless, unless I missed it, is what happens? And, and maybe it's in here. If someone deliberately decides to turn their camera on, what happens?
They're disciplined.
What does that mean?
It means they follow the progressive discipline policy that's set forth within the police department.
And where is that on, on, on the policy program? Where is?
So.
Where is, where is that addressed?
This, this is no diff-
Because I see procedures, I mean, I see, I see purpose, policy, definition, procedure, training, criteria, restrictions, viewing, handling, but it doesn't, it doesn't specify that if some, someone deliberately turned, not, not that I, look, I, I don't know that, I don't believe we have anyone that's going to do that, but-
Well, it does talk about if somebody that you can't do that. It says if-
Where is that in here?
Chief Kramer, it says in there you're not to deliberately turn it off and when you have to turn it on.
Okay.
I want to give you a few examples. We have a policy on police vehicle operations. We have a policy on report writing. We have a policy on body worn cameras. In each one of those instances, if somebody violates any aspect of that policy, they face progressive discipline. We have a whole different policy that governs the discipline philosophy of the Bradenton Police Department. It's a multi-page. It provides the, the deciding factors. It provides different groups that discuss whether it's minor or whether it's egregious, whether it was intentional, whether it was a mistake. Based on each separate instance of misconduct, I sit in review. I am the final disciplinarian of the agency. Nobody disciplines without me signing off on it. If it's minor discipline, my lowest supervisor can push that out, yet it still has to come to me for final disposition. This policy is no different. It, it would be the same as any of our policies and we have, we have a lot, a lot of them. Trust me, the book is, is way too thick. We continue to work on that. Even when you talk about our accreditation, that falls into that as well, whether there's a mechanism for misconduct associated with policy violations. And so if you're asking me specifically how I would treat somebody intentionally turning off their camera or intentionally trying to destroy evidence, that would fall into the most egregious of groups that we consider within the discipline, and that would be dealt with very severely.
And, and that's, that is what I, what we'd expect.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because if we're committing, if, if, if the community has come to us with, you know, a year ago, wanting more, you know, wanting to improve the relationship, and we, and we've decided that this is an opportunity to help us have, you know, confidence in the police department, and we're investing a million dollars, and someone violates the trust of the, this board who's allowing a million dollars towards a program and some individual, not that that would ever happen, but if they were to say, you know what, I don't like these stupid things, I'm going to turn it off, I, I would hope that that would be the end of their-
Apologies.
The end of their, you hungry?
Sounds like Halloween music.
Anyway. But, but I don't see that in here. So that's why I, I just like to see, since I'm, since I'm now approving an entire program, where, where does that say in the procedure?
And it actually says, you know, I don't have my glasses on.
Under.
And I, I just want to point something out as well. Remember that these cameras are not our first cameras. We, we have cameras now. We have in-car cameras that have microphones and even currently there are sanctions, and I'm sure a lot of officers can tell you about those, that even occur if they get out of the car. the car with their in-car camera running and they fail to activate their mic, their body mic, or they fail to test it at the beginning of the shift. So this isn't anything new for us. We, we audit our cameras regularly, and part of that is to ensure that they're being activated when they should, at the proper times, capturing the proper stuff. The last discipline board that I had, it was really made clear, the evidence associated with that case was made clear, because it wasn't a traffic stop, it was an investigation of a domestic. But as required, he had to keep his microphone on, and if you were close to the car, it would pick it up. This is really just an extension, but go ahead and read that.
So, on page eight, under sections, subsections L and M, if a member fails to activate their body worn camera, fails to record the complete contact or interrupts the recording, the member shall document why the recording was not made, interrupted, or terminated. Appropriate disciplinary action shall be taken against any member found to have intentionally failed.
Okay.
To adhere to the recording or retention requirements contained in this PGO, or to have deliberately interfered with a body worn camera's ability to capture video footage.
Okay. And you would find that to be an egregious violation?
There's, so there's a difference between.
Intentionally.
Yes, although, listen, at the end of the day, we're putting these cameras on these folks to capture, to capture stuff.
Everything.
And it's going to be a bit of a learning curve, but it's, we're serious about this. I think every agency is serious about this, or should be.
Yeah. The key word is, it really, I'm glad to see it's intentionally, that, because that's, things happen, and, and, and this could be, this program could be for the benefit of the officers as well as anyone else, because people have different views of what happened in a heated moment.
Yeah.
And this could actually clear an officer of wrongdoing.
And part of our desire to go with Axon at the end of the day were the automatic triggers. It was really that important, triggering, triggers for drawing firearms. I'm not, I, I think trigger for drawing phaser, triggering traffic stop, triggering speed. We can set those, those triggers the same as what we do with our dash cameras. It's really just, that's just a simple rollover. So I, I think in the most serious circumstances, we don't need to worry about that officer hitting that button, and, and I think that that's what's most important as well.
So when they have an automatic trigger, is there a way to override the automatic trigger?
No.
Okay.
So that was a change in your, it says the chief of police or a designated will, will activate the triggers. And so what are the, what are those triggers again? Does that, that's a policy that's done by you or say assistant chief or somebody in command that, that sets those triggers that there's, it's not an override? And what are those triggers, like a gun, you pull a gun?
Well, that, that's an automatic.
I may.
It's going to be an automatic when you pull your gun, an automatic when the lights go on, just like we have now. We're struggling a little bit on the, the speed trigger. I struggle with that now, because we just need to see how that works with our systems. You know, right now, for a while, I had the camera and the lights go on if they hit a, hit a certain speed, but here they're rushing in the middle of the night to go help somebody, and their lights are going on. So we need to kind of find the right balance with that. Speed is, is a factor for me, but we can, we can look at speed in other ways. We can audit speed in other ways. I don't know that the body camera needs to click on for speed per se, but it should click on, it will click on for overhead lights, because that means you're pulling somebody over.
Can I give you a, go ahead.
I was, I'm almost done.
I'm sorry.
And so then, so then, okay, you've answered my question, and I, really, I wanted to know whether we're approving a program. The answer is yes, right now.
Yes.
I wanted to find out that, yes, okay, I did, I did not see that, and, and that's, that's, that's what I wanted to see. And then lastly, I did want to cut a, a report on it. I, the, the mailer, mailer that was sent out from the political action, you had nothing to do with this, I know that, so I'm just making this, it's got nothing to do with you or anyone here, to the citizens, that there was a mailer put out by a political action committee from Tampa with possibly some attorney from Orlando being the perpetrator, that accused this council of doing the opposite of what the council's actually doing, therefore the, the mailer being a bald-faced lie to make, I guess, the council look bad and sway an opinion on the, on the charter amendment that's coming up, as we're now doing everything that we can to correct the situation, to improve relations with PD and the citizens. And now I'm done.
Well, I agree with you, and I hope that the public recognizes what you just said. The flyer was a slam to this council by using the proverbial word defund, which is the exact opposite of what's happened. So I'm hoping that the voting public will see through that November 3rd and say, look, you know, we can't have false information like that, because that's not true. I, I was going to give, but talking of policy, I was going to give a kind of a hypothetical, just say a police officer's at a 7-Eleven, goes in the restroom, shuts the camera off because of privacy, hears a ruckus outside, somebody's robbing the 7-Eleven, comes back out, has to pull his gun, will it automatically trigger, or did by his already being in there, it's off, stays off?
No, if, if he pulls his gun.
It'll trigger.
It triggers the, the camera on.
There's no override of that.
No, sir.
Okay. So I have.
The other comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Byrd?
I guess there are no other comments. I have, I guess, one question for legal, and then I'm prepared to make a motion. The first question is, is that I realize that we're policymakers up here, and I'm prepared to move forward today, but it seems as though, when I hear someone from the elected body saying that the police department can set policy when that's, that's our job, it seems as though we're funding this, but it could be contingent upon an approved, council-approved policy. Am I correct on that assumption?
Yes, I think the council could do that if they wanted to make that approval contingent.
Okay. And the other question is, I'd like to, since it was put on the consent agenda together, the motion we could make to, for both of these items, what, we have to take them separately.
They could be made together.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we move forward in the recommended funding plan, and it will include the forfeiture fund request contingent upon a council-approved policy. And that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion on the second. Any more discussion? Mr. Yallow?
Just a point of clarification. Are we saying that the council must approve the policy for the cameras that the police department is going to get?
We just did.
The, the use of them, how they work? Is that what we're saying?
That's what I'm confused about, Scott. What, what, what policy are we approving? I mean, I don't know, I, I'm a little confused, because I immediately looked down the gym, and I'm saying, okay, he comes into my neighborhood and is going to replace all the sewer lines. Do, do I vote on the policy on how he connects them and what direction they go and how much they can handle? What are we doing?
We, we're approving a policy that's going to have an effect on the community and the police department, and it's something I think is important. We're going to fund that much money.
I understand that, Mr. Byrd, but what, what policy are we approving?
The policy that was emailed to you.
Policy.
We were just talking about. It was just sent, but we have not.
It's a policy that has been written?
We have not approved that. It was sent to us.
Written by, by the, by the police department?
And, and I hear today, even though this is on consent agenda, we hear here today that, you know, you have council people that have some, some questions about that policy. And all I'm saying is, is that, you know, just make it contingent upon that. We're funding it, yes, but just bring it back.
Well, if there's something on that policy that one of us don't like, we, we want to change it?
I just, I just had a question for it, so I, I.
I know, but I mean, is that, to me, we're micromanaging, again. We do not do, every department we have in the city of Braden is important to the citizens of this city. Every one. What they do is important. Now we're picking out a department, I know it's a sign of the times, I'm not, I'm not senile, believe me. But why will we want to direct a policy that is written by, by a department and a department head that knows what is needed? We know, because we're reacting to the public, and it's political, which doesn't really make us make the right decision at times. Now, I'm speaking knowing that come January 3rd, I'm not going to be here, I'm not going to be dealing with, with issues that come up, but I've been here quite a while. And I've seen, years ago, Mr. Byrd, you were here, where, where policies were overridden politically that caused problems by a very strong mayor. And, and I just feel like the possibility that we're headed in that, or you all are headed in that direction. You talk about people using the word defunding. I, I don't think they're so concerned about defunding as much as interference politically. And, and that's my fear for the citizens of, of this, this community, that the responsibility are going to be taken out of the hands of the people that know what to do and put in the hands of people who make decisions based on the political atmosphere. And, and that scares me. I'm going to still be a citizen, but that scares me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to that, and then Chief, you can go, maybe I can clarify. One of the things is, is that, yes, we will send a policy. I looked over the policy, and I, you know, I will say to you, is that, no, I didn't have any problems with the policy. I believe also that when you set policy, it's ever-changing. You try to look at things that you can tweak and make things a little bit better, okay? I understand that. However, when I came into the meeting here today, yes, I did look at this and I saw that it was about the funding. It was about the funding. But I just wanted to get some clarification after hearing comments from Councilman Sanders and questions from Councilman Roth, that, you know, there were some questions on the policy, and I tried to look at saying, hey, contingent upon that. I did not have a problem with the policy. I, I admit that right now. But as far as a clarification, I've always been about clarification, whether we're looking at the charter or whatever we're looking at, and I think that if we're looking at approving funding and not having anything to do with a policy that some people may have questions about, I just thought that it was something that it should be tied in with the funding. But, you know, I just wanted to get that clear. You know, I'm not one, I, I'm prepared, I looked it over, it was a, when it comes to legal documents, you know, short pages. So yes, I read it, I don't have a problem with it. No other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, respond, please. Mr. Byrd, what I guess, and I'm not very good at always explaining myself, I'm, my mind is thinking one direction and my Italian mouth runs the other direction, and I apologize for that. Again, I'll go back to a little bit of history without boring you. In 1980, when I was appointed fire chief of the city of Braden, the fire department never had a policy. In all the years, the forty something years, there was never a policy for the Braden Fire Department. I wrote the first one. I remember when the mayor read it, he said, hm, I don't have any idea what you wrote down there, don't understand it, but good. But that policy changes weekly, monthly, quarterly. When, when things happen that go against way the policy was written, you thought, well, I was not thinking right. So if, if you get in the mode of policies having to be approved by the council, then you're going to have department heads have to come up every time they change something in their policy, dealing with any issues. Now, if you, and I know Patrick and, and Mr. Byrd are well aware, I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. Sanders, about city and county governments when you go to a county manager. Guess what? When you go to city manager, you don't have the authority as a council person to do this. Everything goes through that county manager and city manager. And what you guys are, are wanting to do is to have that kind of authority as a group, and to get five people to agree with it without it being, becoming political, is not going to happen. So I just caution you to put faith in your department heads, because we've got some great department heads, and let them run their departments. Let them run them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I would tell you is that if there's some expectation that there needs to be a change to the policy, then I would recommend we take this off today. I've indicated, I think, that this program is very important to the community. However, I have come up with a policy as a police chief. You pay me pretty well to be the police chief, I just got a raise, I appreciate that. But these are the decisions I make in conjunction with the union, in conjunction with my fellow police chiefs. I look at state law, I look at federal law, I do all those things, because at the end of the day, I'm responsible, I'm liable, I have to present myself as leader of that group. I'm not going to go back to the union, and, and I'm not going to spend my money, today, I say my money, our forfeiture seizure money, on a, on a program that now I'm hearing that you all might want to make some substantive changes to our policy. If, if that's the case, then I, I think we probably need to go back to, to ground zero. What I've brought you today, I think if you compared it to anywhere or anybody else's, you'll see it stands on its own merit. That's what you pay me for, that's what I provided you. This is a program that doesn't need to be shelved, doesn't need to be shelved for two weeks or three weeks, we've already shelved it, we're ready to move forward. You've got a sound policy. If you find some tweaks, if you want to make some changes, call me, get with me. I have an open line, I'm more than willing, I can pick up the phone, I can call the union. That's how we want to proceed.
Scott, that's a reason I asked you about what the appropriate motion is, because what we're asking for is funding so that the police can move forward on this and they operate the policy. It's not, I mean, that's, I am assuming that's the way it would go. It's the way it's gone in other cities.
I was asked if there was any legal impediment to the council conditioning their approval of the program on approving the policy, and I don't think there is. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I want to withdraw my forfeiture seizure request, because I am not going to spend $140,000 sitting in the forfeiture seizure account when I don't even know, at the end of the day, if council will agree with the policy that myself and the union comes forward with. So if, if this is going to become a new norm, if this is going to become a contingency, I want to withdraw that forfeiture seizure request that's on the agenda.
Was this not your policy then?
Yes.
I, I thought this was, well, this is, so, so, I, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to be, so here's the deal. I thought, looking at the agenda, all I thought I was going to be doing today was approving a funding proposal and a forfeiture. And then I find out that I'm approving the entire program lock, stock, and barrel, which I'm fine with, because, and I just wanted to check and make sure that while, while doing so, that I'm approving the, the policy, which you, which you submitted to me.
Yes, sir.
And you clarified the one thing that I'm, and, and I'm perfectly happy with your policy. This is, this is fine.
I am too, but what I'm hearing, and maybe I'm not hearing this right, that you're saying that if I want to, in a month, right, if we say, you know what, we need to change system administrator to program administrator.
No.
If we want to change, listen, you know what, we should put in there that when they come into contact with animals, that they should turn their camera on, that I can do that, that I have the liberty as a chief to do that.
You, you've already heard my one question. You know, I didn't see it, because I counted up, it was on five pages of, of, of criteria for activation, and in the five pages on letter L, the word intentionally, was there. That's all I wanted to see. What, what happened? letter L, the word intentionally, was there. That's all I wanted to see. What, what happens if someone intentionally turns it off? That's all, that's the only policy I need to know. The rest of it is your business. What, what happens if someone violates everything we stand for and decides to violate basically the law? What happens? That's all I wanted to know. So you, you've dealt with that. So I'm fine with your policy. I, I don't need to see any more than that. I, I missed that word. I wouldn't even ask the question if I'd have seen it.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having read all the information that was presented to us and having read the policy and knowing that it has worked through your department and that, as required, the union has also signed off on it, at this point in time, I'm ready to vote to accept all of this information regarding the body cameras and how they're used. So I would respectfully request, Mr. Byrd, if, if you would consider changing your motion, understanding that as a council person, any of us can contact the chief and say, how's the policy working? Or, you know, we heard this report. Many times when you work on policies, there may be an unintended consequence of something that you do. Or some, something comes up in the public that in your wildest dreams you wouldn't have thought would have happened. I mean, until September 11th, I would never have thought somebody would have taken an airplane and turned it into a bomb. So there's always going to be changes that need to be made as the program rolls out and continues to go forward because it's going to be operated by humans and humans can make mistakes at times. But at this point, I'm, I, I think the citizens want to see this program brought forward, and I'm prepared to vote for everything that has been presented to us.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a, I guess, a comment. One of the things, when you make a motion, say it's contingent upon, nobody said it had to be two weeks. Nobody said it had to be four weeks. All it said was that this council, what approve it? I can withdraw the motion right now. We could prove it, the whole thing together. I don't have a problem with that. It's more of a, a situation where I had a legal question to ask of, of our city attorney. And he answered it in, to my satisfaction. Now, I said in the very beginning, no, I read it over. I did not have a, a problem with the policy. I did not have a problem with it. So, you know, at this point, you know, I'm prepared to withdraw that. But I just urge the rest of council, I will not be a part of council come January 3rd, I believe you said, Mr. Gallo. I won't be on council. And, you know, so it's something that you'll, you know, you need to look forward and, and saying it, you know, no, it's not all of a sudden a thing where you can't do, you know. And that was more, more or less mine. Maybe that's the, the, the public administration side of me, that I just wanted to get that out there. But I withdraw that motion at this point.
Would you, would you be willing to restate your motion and see if the second would agree with it?
We got a second?
I, I, I withdraw my second.
Okay. Now, in regards to my motion, and since it's considering both of those, I think we should make the motion, and I hope the city attorney will agree with it. But I would like to make a motion that we approve the body camera funding request and program.
I don't know that there's a program on the table. Are you talking about incorporating the policy?
I want to include the policy.
I think you can do that. There's no, there's no legal issue with incorporating that into the approval. But I think what you've heard here and what would need to be clarified is that the policy may change over time, so...
But if we approve what's on the table right now and the funding goes forward, the program goes forward. There's no delay. Everybody's happy.
And Scott, the, the policy has been established by the police department.
Right.
Council's seen that. All we're asking today on this agenda is you approve the funding request. Obviously, they've looked at the, at the policy piece, and that doesn't need to be a part of the motion.
Well, it, it's actually more than just a funding request. This is, this is the entire program. That's what I, I almost think, the consent agenda was a little misleading because it makes it believe we're just approving a funding. No, this is it. This is, this is the whole deal. So, so that's fine. I, I just like, I would just like to be told this is the whole deal. This, this is one of my problems with consent agendas is sometimes stuff has slipped, slipped in here and, you know.
Let me go ahead and define that because I, I think it's getting misconstrued as to why this is the way it was. At the last meeting, it was requested to bring forward a funding mechanism for doing this. Okay? At that point in time, they also, council had also said that, that they wanted to see the policy. Didn't say approve the policy, said they wanted to see the policy, that they couldn't move forward till they had seen the policy. So, the policy was distributed and therefore this was put on the agenda. If you change going forward that you want to approve the policy, that is fine. There was no trying to, don't imply that there's any skullduggery going on here that we're trying to slip in that there was both of them. This was strictly saying at a request of city council at the last meeting, before we move forward, we'd like to see the policy, which was presented to the, yes, it was. It was presented. It was presented. Because I was not going to put it on the agenda. Sharon and I had this long discussion. We're not going to put it on the agenda unless that policy had been distributed to council for them to see. So I don't want it to assume that this was concocted by us to put it forward as a, as a joint package. It wasn't. It was just bringing forward to say, you had requested, and I said, I can certainly make sure I can bring that forward at the next meeting. Three weeks is certainly enough time to show you how to pay for it. That's why it is here. That's, that's all it was.
Mr. Mayor.
And that's just, so I, I'm not, what I, what I, so what I would have seen, what I would have expected then is we approved the funding. We, we presented a, a policy, which is fine. And then I thought there would have been another saying, so, so now you approve the whole deal. And, but, but then that's, that's why I wanted to ask the question. Are we approving the whole deal right now? The answer is yes. Fine, fine.
That wasn't my to say.
Okay.
Mine was to say, this is the funding mechanism.
I know you don't create the agenda.
And I don't create what you guys are going to vote on. I was just bringing back what you had requested us to bring forward to you.
I, I, I agree, Carl. I just, I just like to know what I'm voting on. That's, that's, I'm funny that way.
Mr. Byrd.
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, we've been all over the, around the block on this. And even to the extent I heard comments about withdrawing certain items. I think the easiest way, it was put on the consent agenda, consent agenda items H and I. And I think I, I'd like to, I had a motion that didn't get a second.
Well, I, people jumped, people jumped in and started talking and I was under the assumption that Mr. Roth wanted to second it because he had seconded the other one and I was waiting.
Yeah.
But I'm more than happy to second your motion.
Well, let me, let me try to, you know, clarification, I believe in that.
Okay.
Motion to approve items H and I.
Seconds.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve items H and I on the consent agenda. No more discussion? Let's vote. Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Motion is approved, five to zero. Items H and I on the consent agenda are approved. Ms. Bochy.
Yes, sir. Under Business Advertising Petitions Hearings and Communications, excuse me, we have the second reading and public hearing of the Police Pension Ordinance 3072, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Part I Chartering-related laws, Subpart B related laws, Article IV Police Officers Retirement System of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bradenton, Florida, amending Section I Definitions, amending Section II Membership, amending Section VII Pre-Retirement Death, amending Section VIII Disability, amending Section IX Vesting, amending Section 19 Domestic Relations Orders, Retiree-Directed Payments, Exemption from Execution, amending Section 27 Military Service Prior to Employment, amending Section 28 Prior Police Service, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Here With, and Providing an Effective Date. And again, this is the Police Pension Ordinance. The Pension Board is providing, or is asking, proposing some changes to it. We've got the board attorney here today, Scott Christensen. He's going to make you a brief presentation on the changes that are being proposed and I think introduce himself.
Good morning. My name is Scott Christensen. I'm from the firm of Christensen &amp; Deener, PA. I'm here today, obviously, representing the Police Officers Pension Board. By way of introduction, I kind of chuckled when the clerk said I was here to introduce myself to the, basically to the City of, of Bradenton. I, I have been representing, my partner and I've been representing the, the police board since 1992 and the fire board since 1989. So we've been doing this for a while. But I'm happy to come in anytime you ask. And obviously, this particular ordinance had a little cost associated with it, so I think that's one of the reasons they had also requested that I come in. I was here back in January of 19, I think, on a fire ordinance as well. So hopefully some of you all remember me. I know Mr. Gallo does because I, I remember him when he was the fire chief. So we've worked together for many, many years. But the, as far as the board and the board's requirements, and this, of course, applies to both the police officers and the firefighter pension boards, the boards are normally, normally make recommendations, if you will, to the city for changes to the pension plans, like we're, like we're making today. Changes, typically the board's responsibility is, you know, investing the money that's, that's deposited into the plan and approving benefits that, that are in line with the benefits that we have in the, in the pension plan document itself. But of course, the only body that can make changes to the pension plan itself is the city council. So that's why we're here today. So over the years, from time to time, I come in and make changes that are associated with, maybe changes that are made to the Florida law that apply to police and firefighter pension plans. The federal law, typically the Internal Revenue Code requirements have to be updated in pension plans from time to time. And of course, if the union and the city negotiate benefit changes, I would be the one that would draft those ordinances to accomplish those benefit improvements. So that's essentially what my job and what the, what the board's job is. The ordinance that you have before you today, 3072, it's primarily a housekeeping ordinance for clarification to, to some sections. We're removing some obsolete language. It kind of got built upon and some of the old language that we didn't need anymore, we've removed and, and hopefully made the, the document a little shorter. We've changed, we've made, also made some changes to more closely track the previous collective bargaining agreements. Frankly, the one change that we made that had to do or that has the small cost associated with it is actually a, a change that probably should have been made some time ago to, to come in line with the changes that have been made over the years. And if you, if you read my letter, hopefully you did, you can see that the normal retirement age has changed a number of times over the years. And so this, this provision that we had in the vesting section just didn't keep up with that. And, and that's why we're making that change today. So hopefully you've received, obviously, the ordinance itself. You've received the letter from me and you've also received the, the report that's done by the Plan's Actuary indicating exactly what the cost is associated with this plan. And the actuary has told us that all of the changes in the plan don't have any cost except for the one item under the vesting section, that where we're changing the vesting from somebody, and everyone understands what vesting is. Vesting is basically somebody is working here as a police officer. They leave before they're eligible to start to draw a benefit from the plan, but they're vested meaning that they've worked here at least 10 years. So that means they have a right to get a benefit from the plan, but they have to wait to get that benefit. So the question is, how long do they have to wait? And, and essentially, in the plan now, it, it basically says 47. Well, we have two different groups that have a different normal retirement age. One group has a normal retirement age at 55 and another group has a retirement age at 45. Or was it 52?
Forty-five.
Yeah. Forty-five, right. Forty-five is the earlier one and then 55. So 47 is like right in the middle. And, and virtually all, and I represent like 65 different plans or 60 different plans around the states. And at one time, my partner and I represent 180 plans. So, you know, this is all we do. And the plans that we represent typically in the vesting section, the benefit when somebody leaves prior to being eligible to receive a benefit, they start to draw that benefit at the date that they would have been eligible for normal or early retirement had they continued to work. Okay? Age 47 for some of these people now is after their normal retirement age. And for some of them, it's before their normal retirement age. And that doesn't make sense. So that's why we're making the change. Obviously, there's a little cost associated with it because apparently the actuary determined that some of the people who will be able to get it, they'll be able to get it a little earlier. So there's going to have a cost. And, and there should have been sort of a wash, but because of the, the ages of the people who are in the plan, there, it resulted in a small, small cost associated with that one change. So I can go through this ordinance one section at a time if you'd like. You've already had a long morning. But I'm happy to go through each one of the changes. Or if you want to just ask questions about anything that I put in here, hopefully my letter was helpful so that you understood what we were doing and why we were doing it.
What was the cost?
Anyone have any questions?
$13,842.
$13,000?
$13,000, yep. .18% of payroll. Any questions?
Anybody else?
Nope.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Good to see everybody.
Mr. Mayor, we just thought it was important, every once in a while, the pension plans brings things forward, just to have Scott, since he now represents both plans with passing of Lee, unfortunate, but it's been a while now. But, but still, that, that he has represented us well for a, a long time, just to get him out in front of you all every once in a while, just, just for, for fun.
Carol, attend a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 3072.
Mr. Mayor, we need a public hearing, sir.
I have a motion and a second.
No, we need a public hearing.
A public hearing, sir.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Open a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this ordinance? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none? Open a public hearing. Now, Carol, attend a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 3072.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 3072. Are there any questions? Hearing none. Let's vote. Ward three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Ordinance 3072 is approved. The vote's five to zero. Thank you very much. Ms. Bochy.
Thank you, Scott. Next, we have the first reading of ordinance number 3074, an ordinance of the City of Bradenton, Florida, extending the temporary moratorium on the offering for hire of motorized scooters or micro-mobility devices or issuance of any authorizations, permits, or franchises pertaining to micro-mobility, adopted pursuant to ordinance 3055 and extended pursuant to ordinance 3062. And providing that said moratorium shall remain in effect until May 9th, 2021, or shall terminate on the effective date of this city's adoption of an ordinance to regulate motorized scooters or micro-mobility devices. Again, this is a first reading, so we don't need any action today. We'll go ahead and set the second reading and public hearing for October 28th. Just briefly, this is extending the moratorium that was due to expire November 9th. Carl has just received the draft document from the consultant relating to our proposal for the micro-mobility plan, and we'd like to get that in front of you for some discussion prior to going forward. And we couldn't accomplish that by November 9th. So we'll go ahead and bring this back to you for the extension of the moratorium on the 28th. Next, we have two quasi-judicial items, so I'll go ahead and administer the oath. Anyone wishing to address counsel during the following public hearings will stand and raise their right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the factual statements and representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate? Thank you. Our first item under planning and community development is SU.20.2919, Ward Three, Neighborhood 6. 6.01. This is a public hearing. It's a request by Lyle Fogarty, agent for AMI Lot 3 LLC owner, for a special use permit to operate a drive-through food service establishment in the Urban Village zoning district. The property is located at 2525 Manatee Avenue West, Bradenton, Florida, 34205. This is parcel ID number 3441700109. And I believe Marshall is here to present.
Good morning. Marshall McCurry with Planning and Community Development. And a little impaired today, but I'm here with you mentally. I'm glad to see everybody here and well. Thank you, Sharon, for that. Got a brief presentation, if you would, and be glad to take any questions you have. This is a request for a special use for property located at 2525 Manatee Avenue West. And I will find the slide button at some point. Maybe not. Why am I not seeing? There we go. Thank you. All right. As you know, special uses come before you for certain types of uses that are, potentially have adverse impacts on surrounding properties or may not be appropriate fits for a given zoning district. So special uses go through an application process reviewed by staff and then presented to the Planning Commission for a recommendation and here to you all for final decision, which would be today. And this is for a special use for a drive-through eating and drinking establishment in the Urban Village zoning district. And this is the Little Bank location I think everyone's familiar with, the southeast corner of Manatee Avenue West and 26th Street West. Property is owned UV, Urban Village, and you see the surrounding zoning there. It is surrounded by Urban Village. Primarily to the south of it is the Professional zoning district where we have a lot of office development. And future land use, again, Urban Village with Professional down below it. Everything looks very clean and very consistent over there. And this is the location in question, the existing single-story commercial building that's been vacant for a while. They will reuse a portion of the building for the ice cream facility and add approximately 619 square feet of new construction. Plan to convert the existing outdoor canopy to outdoor seating area for their patrons. A very difficult to read site plan. I have a larger scale version that we can zoom. I heard similar comments from the Planning Commission. Let me see if I can zoom in just a little bit. And I do have a larger. Well, I can't. That's it. So as we see here, this is the existing driveway access point into the bank property. There's also an existing access point here onto the alley. And the proposal is to add a secondary access point north of the existing. We can talk about that little...
Would you repeat that, Marshall?
The plan is to add another ingress and egress point north of the existing location. The existing location is here.
Close to the traffic light.
Closer to the traffic light. There was discussion about this at the Planning Commission, and I will go ahead and mention, this does meet our standards from the city, but this is a county right-of-way and therefore subject to permitting through Manatee County. Manatee County may or may not grant that. They may grant it as an exit only. So there will be some variability to this site plan, as is the case quite often. We have a similar case that at the Planning Commission, our Public Works representative mentioned over on Morgan Johnson Road, wherein negotiating with the other entity, they modified their, their site plan a good bit as far as the ingress and egress, and they took some property for future right-of-way. So that is always a possibility here and can result in some minor changes. Should it result in anything major, should you approve it today, it would come back to you. And let me get back to, here we go. All these criteria for evaluating a special use, but by basically evaluating the appropriateness of this use, given the surrounding development pattern and the zoning use allocation for the area. My staff report goes through each of these items and provides staff comment. I will point out a few of these. The submittal is compliant with city standards, generally speaking. We're not through engineering yet, so there may be some minor tweaks to the site plan. One thing that they are falling short on is the required 10-foot landscape buffer surrounding the special use property. Due to the addition of the pass-through lane on the easterly side, they're requesting to only have a three-foot portion, excuse me, a five-foot portion, three-foot portion on their property and a five-foot portion in the alley's right-of-way, which is landscaped. And they would further enhance the landscape there and maintain that at their expense. That would be an eight-foot buffer, three foot of their ownership, five foot of city right-of-way, but serving as a total eight-foot buffer versus the 10. Location and design of refuse, yes, as I mentioned earlier, generally compliant with the Public Works standards. It will be refined and made, made approvable during the site improvement permit process, but is generally compliant as proposed. Signs and exterior lighting are subject to approval and subject to standards of the land use regulations. So Urban Village signage that will require permitting, lighting must demonstrate compliance with our lighting standards. Effective the value of surrounding properties, the use shall not hinder development of any vacant properties or adversely affect their value. Our finding is that the resurrection of this currently vacant property and the reinvestment of the property will in fact enhance the value of surrounding properties and the introduction of this use, which is complementary to those that are permissible in the Urban Village, would be a good addition to the neighborhood. And we do point out the, the land and the building are adequate, more than adequate in fact, and would be nice to see the, the minor modifications that are necessary to bring that property back to life. So staff's assessment of the proposed use does make the following findings. The site is well suited to support the proposed use, located in an established commercial corridor and an area of mixed use, and many of which are complementary to the proposed use. While the new entrance is proposed onto 26th Street, it is compliant with city standards and provides for better onsite circulation for the proposed use, aside what will be required along the eastern side of 26th Street West. As we mentioned earlier, that is subject to permitting through the county and may change. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant who is here and will speak may have had some contact with the county and may have some updates regarding that as well. We find that the site design is generally compliant with applicable standards and will be subject to review and approval, of course, through our site improvement permit process. The use is consistent with surrounding development pattern, and most importantly, we find the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and future land use designation of Urban Village, and furthers the goals of the Urban Village to provide neighborhood and community services in compact mixed-use setting. This item was heard by the Planning Commission at last month's meeting, and they supported staff's recommendation, which was to approve with the following stipulations. Allow the reduction of the 10-foot buffer on the easterly side to only involve three feet of their property and to use the five-foot of right-of-way, provided that the area is landscaped and maintained by the owner as a buffer. And secondly, site signage is limited to that available in the UV, Urban Village District, and is subject to permitting through the city. With that, I am glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, Marshall, what were the permitted use for Urban Village? Remind me.
Yes. Urban Village is a mixed-use district, so it does allow residential, and so we do see residential in Urban Village a good bit, but it does allow for smaller scale, limited scale office and retail. Retail is allowed by right, office would be allowed by right. A restaurant with more than 20 seats would be allowed by right. This is triggered because of the drive-through aspect. Another special use would be a lounge, for example, something that could have potential negative impacts. The, the drive-through is just a special use requirement in the Urban Village District because of that potential for adverse impact.
Okay.
Marshall? Mr. Gallo?
Yes, sir.
At the Planning Commission meeting, was, was there any discussion about the east side of the property rather than the landscaping, that there be a four, or five, or six-foot fence, like a PVC fence?
That was not discussed. That's something that could be proposed to the applicant.
Well, the reason why I asked that is I can remember when the bank was there, we got phone calls every day about cars, especially late in the evening, when, when different times of the year, when they made that turn, the lights were coming into those people's homes, and they were some kind of bent out of shape. So as a point of remembering, I put that on the table, that, that could be an issue.
And I will remind the council, you can attach conditions to any approval you provide for a special use, and if that would like to be one of the conditions you establish, that could be so.
Well, I'm one of the council persons whose wards that end, because I'm sure that she has some, but I support her.
Well, it's not a she.
We, we would note that it is, it would have to be a compliant fence, so no higher than four feet, but yes, you could stipulate.
We can override it.
Um...
Not sure four foot would be enough.
It should be enough to mask the headlights, particularly with the vegetation that'll be there as well.
Answer my question, can we override that?
I don't. Hey, I think we'd have to ask the attorney about that. Could they deviate from a zoning standard in the action on a special use? Can they...
I think that there are some provisions in the special use standards for that. Let me pull that up and look at it while we're talking.
I know we can be more restrictive, but I don't know about being more generous.
Do we know the hours of operation?
No. That's a good question for the applicant, and that could be a stipulation in your approval as well.
And Mr. Gallo, I think that person that was, didn't like the headlights, I don't believe they own that property anymore. Ms. Barbara?
If you could pull this up again.
Yeah, I'm bringing up the one that have more Zoom capabilities for.
And I will point out, I was the person that complained because, yes, I'm wearing glasses, yes, I have a magnifying glass. I still had difficulty reading some of the stuff on this. So I will respectfully request that whoever makes application to us in the future, that we don't get anything this tiny again.
Well, in, in defense of the applicant, they provided this electronically, so I have the capacity to make it larger. I don't know what format honestly you all get, so I don't know if you get things electronically or strictly in an eight and a half by 11. Eight and a half 11 would be virtually impossible, so I apologize for that.
My questions that I have is looking at this property. Explain to me a couple of things. Because like I said, I had a hard time reading it. Is there a drive-up window that they can come and pick food up?
Let me try to step through it real quick with you and point out some anomalies we've already, we've already noted. But let me, let me just back up and see if I can get this thing to disappear. Hello. Okay, this is the existing ingress egress that the bank is currently served by. The driveway currently comes around this way, and this provides for them to circle around, as you know. What they're proposing to do is to put the drive-through here on this side of the bank, so this would be the drive-through lane here. This would be the bypass lane. Now, if you look down here, we've already identified that there's an issue here we're going to have to work out. There's conflict here, so that little painted triangular thing is a little confusing. We're going to figure that out in the course of site improvement permit process. But this is the bypass lane to go around, should you just want to go up here and park and stay, or go in and get whatever you're getting and leave. So this lane is drive-through, this is bypass. We have parking here and the parking here.
Okay, so someone, if they wanted to, could come in, and I'm very familiar with this property because I used to, when the bank that operated there, that was my bank, so I'm very familiar with this property. So you can come in and you can immediately make a left turn and park in any of these spaces?
I won't say immediately because there'll be a drive coming in this one way right here, but just past that, you could turn in and park in any of these spaces here.
Those spaces. You can continue around the building and place an order.
Right here at the drive-through?
And again, pick up and leave. You can, do you, if, if you want to stay, do you park and then is there a place to walk in and place an order and then enjoy the ambiance that it is?
They've identified outdoor seating. I believe there will be a service area indoors, but I'll let the applicant elaborate on that. We haven't seen building plans yet. We're just working with site plan and footprint. But we'll find out about that, but the seating is outdoors.
Okay. I do know, and Mr. Gallo touched on this, that at one point, when you had people coming in and going through and using the ATM and then leaving and going down the alleyway, we did have complaints from the neighbors about the traffic, the speed, the noise, the exhaust, using the alleyway as a way to get into the property and to leave the property. So that I'm going to be very interested in what the hours of operation are. I'm going to be very interested, is, is it just ice cream or are they going to expand? Is there going to be, you know, exhaust from a fryer or something like that? I mean, again, there's a difference between just an ice cream parlor and say, someone that operates ice cream and a diner very similar to, say, Shake Pit. It's two different, it's two different entities in my mind. My other concern is, again, traveling up and down 26th Street as much as I do and going to my home the way that I do, I have no idea how you're going to have a way to get in and a way to get out closer to that stoplight. Because at that point, you have, if I, if I'm sitting on 26th Street and I'm looking north, at that stoplight, you have two lanes that turn onto Manatee Avenue to head west.
They're illustrated here.
You have one lane that will continue to go down to Riverview Boulevard, and you have one lane that turns off. So if you have someone trying to get out closer to the light and making a left turn, I, I can't wait to see how many calls, emergency calls, we end up running there. Because there is a permissive right turn off of Manatee Avenue onto 26th Street, if there's a red light, or if the light, you know, if the light's green and you, you can turn there. People whip around that corner. I mean, I gave up walking to the, to Richard's Food Store because of the way that people drive at that intersection. People whip around those corners without any regard to pedestrians, and it's wonderful to say pedestrians have the right-of-way, but it's very hard to do that if you're in a coffin.
Marshall?
So I have lot, I, I have some, I, I need some questions answered about this. What kind of, where's the signage on the, the property going to be? How large is the signage? How bright is the signage? Because this does abut some residential properties in a residential neighborhood.
Well, let me back up a little bit on the, I can't address the operations. I can tell you what was presented at the Planning Commission, is it is exclusively, I believe it's, shoot, my vocabulary is limited on frozen treats. Not ice cream butt, Spumante? What is it?
Gelato?
Gelato, thank you. Perfect. And possibly maybe expanding into pretzels, but the owner, or the proprietors here, the applicants here, and they can better represent these things than I can. Any, that's why I wanted to make the point about the signage. Urban Village signage is very limited in scope. It's a 10-foot height maximum, monument style only. Illumination cannot spill beyond the site. It's okay if it's illuminated, but it has to be contained within the site, just like the site illumination.
When you say monument site, that's kind of like a tombstone on the ground?
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's the Urban Village standard. Current signage along that stretch of Manatee, you'll see different types of signs depending on when that sign was installed.
And what was grandfathered in and what wasn't.
That's the evolution of it, exactly. It's taken quite a while to get there, and believe you me, every new business that moves in in Urban Village complains, well, what about the one across the street that's 45 feet tall or whatever? So we're getting there.
Understood. Again, I just, a lot of questions and...
The, the access point is one that staff's review noted and is of concern, but it does meet city standards for separation from intersections and separations from other access points. Would the city grant a permit there given the operations? I don't know. That would be subject to our permitting through, through Public Works for a new driveway, but this will go through the county, and we will see. A lot of doubt was cast at the Planning Commission meeting by those speaking about it, that this would be approved from the county.
I don't, I mean...
And as I mentioned earlier, the...
From the county, but...
The applicant may have already had some contact and have a better idea of what the county's going to be looking for there.
It's an interesting idea.
Marshall? Directly across 26th Street there is the, as you said, the market. That driveway that comes out of that one, where is it in relation to what the second one they...
See if I can get it on an aerial. Let's see. Oh, gosh. Zoom in a little bit here and see if we can get a...
I believe it's south of the...
Yeah, it's, it's definitely closer to Manatee.
So this is the entrance to the bank right down here.
Right.
So it's a good bit south.
Okay, that's that one, but the, the one that you're proposing to put in is almost going to be directly across the street.
Yeah, it's just, just a, generally in this area, so almost in alignment, yes.
Almost, it's almost across the street from that one.
And it's, I mean, if you want to have fun one day, sit there and watch people try to make a left turn across all those lanes of traffic. sit there and watch people try to make a left turn across all those lanes of traffic to get on Manatee. I mean, it...
Aligning the drives is a good thing for awareness of what's going on across the street from you. So that would be encouraged if it was approved. So alignment does tend to be a good thing. But your point's well understood. The stacking that occurs at that light will block that northerly one on a regular basis.
Now, is that a county decision?
It is. City can say that this does pass muster in terms of our standards, but it's still subject to outside agency permitting.
Ralph?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one thing that we've touched on earlier was in here, there is a possibility of adding sidewalks?
Yes, along the east side of 26th Street.
And maybe Manatee Avenue as well?
It is proposed on 26th Street. I believe Manatee Avenue has a sidewalk along that section.
Not going down to the...
It probably, it doesn't connect because there is nothing to connect to it here, but it does continue along.
Yeah, you're right, it does. So, and then I talked to you earlier, one of the things I fear, and now, the property, we'll get to this, the property, this is not the entire bank property. There's another building that's not being sold, right? Not involved with this?
This is the only property in question, I don't know, I'm not aware of it.
Well, there's another building to the south.
Yeah, there's the house, there's the house with the tennis court, and then another bank property, and then this is a corner. So there's another property sitting there.
The accounting office.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's a separate facility.
And so that stays the same?
Yeah, this is only applicable to the property highlighted here.
Okay. The one thing that I was concerned about is, A, this is, this property to me is, kind of reminds me of the 13th Avenue property that we're dealing with. It's just a tough corner, it's a hard fit. The one thing that I fear, and knowing that something's going to go in there, and I don't know what, this may not be a bad fit, but what I am concerned with is traffic going down that avenue, that alleyway. And I'm not sure what our alleys considered roadways?
They're public right-of-way.
Okay. So, because 7th Avenue, trying to cross 26th Street, there are frequent accidents at that intersection. That trying to get across 26th, it's just quite often it's tied up in accidents or it chokes and bottlenecks. So my fear too is that people coming in and out of here, not knowing how much traffic there will be, that 7th Avenue is a major grid for people getting in and out of downtown. So there's already a lot of cut-through traffic. And that that alleyway will just add to a street that is, it's an old street. It's very narrow, it's being used as a thoroughfare, it's not, it's being used as. And then we're loading more traffic on there, and that people are going to come down and get onto that, try to come back and make a left at 7th, which is where the accidents pile up. Because it's just, by then, it's just, it's one thing to cut across the street, and it's another thing to try to get into traffic if you're going with flow, that's one thing. But going against flow, it's another, so. I mean, I have concerns about this. But I also know that something's going to have to go in there, and I don't know what that is, so these are...
It is zoned to allow forward development, and the development's going to result in customers. So I do point out, and this is provided to us, it's not necessarily a factor of requirement, but they did provide us trip generation rates. The previous bank estimated daily trips was 696 versus a fast food with drive-through at 298. And PM, peak hour trips greatly reduced. So it is a far lesser traffic generator than a bank is. That said, the concerns are noted. However, as any planner would say, multiple points of access is a good thing. Alley serve properties very, very well. We like to have alleys and roads.
So we're saying that that bank had 600 trips?
I don't know what that bank specifically produced, this is just trip generation standards. Yeah, this is just from the industry standards that are published on a yearly basis, based on averages of different types of businesses.
I think at one time it had pretty good traffic.
I think we talked about child generation rates one time, and how they're different for multifamily than single-family properties.
And then the, so it previously had a drive-through, and this is special use, so if this business were to fail for any reason, the drive-through is not assumable, correct?
If they were to come back with the same use, same use category, they could just resume that operation.
You mean, same use being an ice cream shop?
Correct. There are triggers for changes in special use. The same use can reoccupy a previously granted special use. But if they modify it beyond a 20% threshold, so let's say they wanted to come in, but they wanted to expand it, and it's in excess of 20%, it automatically would come...
Kentucky Fried Chicken in there.
It would depend on what they propose to do. Does it trigger the 20% deviation from what the current approval is? And if so, the code was directed right back through this process. Typically, you're going to need far more square footage within a building to accommodate a full-service fast-food restaurant.
And what's the square footage of this building?
They're retaining, let me get back up to the front. They're retaining 300 and some odd, and they're adding at 600. I've got that figure up front, I do believe. Right here. Oops. Shoot, sorry. We'll get there. That hands not working the best. 692 being added, and I can't quite make out the number on that dinky site plan, let me get the bigger one.
Would you like my magnifying glass?
Magnifying glass? Is that it? I can't quite read it. But 396 sounds good.
Plus 600?
397, 619, so it'll result in about a thousand square feet.
Okay, okay. All right, well, like I said, this, I have a lot of cautionary fear of how this might not work, but I also think that, you know, this might not be, of all the things that could go in there, this may be one of the better choices.
Remember, there was a, not formal proposal, but they came and asked us about putting the wall wall down.
Yeah, that was not going to work. Yeah, so anyway, that's, everyone's heard my concerns. The alleyway is a potential problem, because it's just an alley, it's not a street. And then 7th Avenue and 26th Street, for those of you who don't drive that, very dangerous intersection. There is a lot of accidents there, and there will be more.
Any other questions, Admiral? Admiral, thank you. It's open to public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request, please come forward.
Morning.
Morning, Council. My name is Eli Payne. I'm with Level Up Consulting, the engineers for the project. I'm here with the developer, if you guys have any questions for us. As Marshall said, we are, I am seeking a special use permit for a drive-through in an urban village area. I had stated there was actually five drive-throughs there now with the bank, as you know. The, as Marshall has informed us, the drive-throughs do not carry over with change of use. As you stated, this is a pretty, not very intense use. The off-peak hour, definitely an off-peak hour development.
What are the hours of operation? That's a question that's come up. Please come forward. Name of the address of the record, please.
My name's Lyle Fogarty, 3315 West Walcraft Avenue, Tampa, Florida. 33611. The tenant for this particular property is, I think it's technically Italian ice. I don't know if Italian ice and gelato are the exact same thing. But the hours of operation that they propose is 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, during the winter months, and 11:00 to 11:00 during the summer months.
To answer your question on the access, we have met with Manatee County and the engineers over there, and they are granting us a right-out only. So we've already met with them over the phone, a couple of conference calls, gone through exhibits, and they've told us to go ahead and submit with a right-of-way permit with a right-out only.
What, if anything, do we know about alley usage that's there at the property? There's an alley that runs back there, that was one of the concerns, particularly Mr. Ralph has.
I can speak to that for just a moment. I think it does provide additional access, and as Marshall said, you know, in the development world, access is key. I don't know if it's technically an alley or a street. It's called a, you know, 25th Street Court, I think is what the name of it is. When we bought the parcel, first of all, I'll just back up for a second. I grew up here in Bradenton, Bradenton native, I live in Tampa now. Some of you may know, you know, my dad, Gene Fogarty, has been around forever, my mom, Julie Fogarty. And started my own business about three years ago. This is the first parcel we bought when we started Clover Investment Properties. And just really excited to be back here in Bradenton doing some, hopefully some cool little developments. Love this corner, love kind of creating a little node. I've got a sister that lives right down the street from this with little kids, and I know they're going to enjoy it. But we did buy it three years ago. This is what I do for a living, we go out, we find tenants for properties, mostly retail. This was a tough one because of the access. Visibility's great, everyone knows it, everyone says, oh, I knew this corner extremely well. And so, but it did take us a while to find what we thought was the right tenant for this property. This is a low-intensity use, we consider it to be a very family-friendly use. And the, as part of purchasing it, there's an easement that runs across the main access point right now that accommodates the accounting office for their access. So they wouldn't tell their clientele to come through the alley. They come through our driveway, and then they loop back around into their parking lot, which I think at one point was the bank branch to the drive-through. And so we can't touch that, Sacra Zandig belongs to them as well. It's technically our property, but they have access to, you know, kind of drive-through it and go back over to their parking lot as well. But that alley slash street is a nice little node. We think that the vast majority of clientele for this particular business will come in from 26th Street and exit, you know, via 26th Street. But locals that get to know how to scoop back out the 7th if they're heading to downtown or something, you know, might kind of discover that at egress point.
One thing, where do you propose having the dine-in component of this? I mean, you're obviously focused on a drive-through, but I could tell you that, you know, that's in the middle of really four residential neighborhoods where I would, I know what kind of business a Shake Pit gets, that, you know, you have, you have walking distance, a lot of families that are not, not very far from that, so...
It's actually, so the canopy right now covers five drive-through lanes. The way that development, and I wish we would have brought, you know, it's just elevations, but it's going to work, we're building out, basically enclosing two of the drive-through lanes, and then three of the drive-through lanes will be converted to kind of a covered patio. So there'd be some tables and chairs underneath there. And so it's really, it's not dine-in, because you're not going to be able to, the clientele won't be inside an air-condition, but I presume the tenant will be putting ceiling fans and stuff up underneath there. It'll be, you know, similar to, I don't want to say, you know, get people in the right mindset with Shake Pit, you know, since they do sell burgers and this business has no interest in any of that. But as far as the outdoor seating, that's primarily where people eat. Obviously, at Shake Pit, there's a very small interior area. There's none of that planned for here. The entire thousand square feet is for their ice cream operation, their coolers, that kind of stuff. So it'll be several tables and chairs underneath the canopy. So if people, I do believe that people will probably come, sit down and have an ice cream. I know I take my kids out to ice cream regularly, and we never let them have it in the car because it turns into a disaster. You know, my guess is that we will be, you know, kind of seeing a lot more activation within the parcel.
Any other question? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in favor of this request? Anyone in opposition to this request? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. Colonel, entertain the motion.
Marshall, let me ask a question. What would be, so we've talked about all the concerns and the pros and cons of this. I think we've addressed them. The one thing that I'm a little concerned about is the ability to assume, for someone else to assume, the rights. Because where this establishment may not be a big traffic generator problem, where the next one might be. So is there any restrictions on the, that we can put on the, giving the approval for special use where it just isn't automatically given to...
Your code provides good guidance on special uses once they've been granted, and does not lock them down to not grow or change, but it does have, it does whittle them down to very limited change. So that 20% threshold is what I indicated earlier. So should there, anything about the scope of their operations, anything about the footprint of their operations, anything about their impact is deemed to be in excess of 20% of what the current impact is, it can be directed back through this special use process. The code, I think, gives us very good guidance on assessing these things. I know the applicant would have loved if we allowed a bank drive-through to translate into a food service drive-through, but they're differentiated in our land use table, and therefore we have to treat them differently.
Current use, are you using the 600 bank numbers, which I don't think they ever got anywhere near that, or the 200?
We're assigning this to the use and not necessarily the traffic generated by that use. So should there be another use proposed here with traffic generations that were of a concern for you, that might be a basis for you to deny it. Here, we're pointing that out, but that's a factor for you to consider for this particular use. Should a proposal come in for Kentucky Fried Chicken to come in and add on to this, and it's deemed, it's going to trigger a 20% threshold for sure, it's going to come back before you. And if at that time, you felt that it was going to be too impactful to the neighborhood, or a Wawa, for example, that would be a totally different type of special use that would have to come back through. In fact, a Wawa wouldn't be allowed because our comp plan has recently been changed to eliminate any kind of auto-oriented uses, so that wouldn't even be a possibility today.
Okay.
I'm trying to express that our code does give you good protection for these special uses, and does tie them down pretty well, and gives you latitude to establish conditions for their approval.
Okay, so, having heard all my concerns, you think that as is, is that, not that this property, I don't see this property being a problem. There's no potential for the next one coming in under the same special use inherited, not being safeguarded by our current...
I feel comfortable saying that, yes. Should a use come in that is different from, if it's exactly the same, if they're just going to turnkey operation, no problem at all. We wouldn't have a right to direct them back through this process. But if they want to expand it in any way, change its operations, it gets recategorized by our land use table from drive-through to sit-down primarily, something like that, that may trigger some kind of change in how we look at it.
And how about Mr. Gallo's proposal with the lights and, because I think, I think a six-foot fence, if it's allowed, would probably do that, because this is going to, this is going to be right in the back of someone's, there's a house right there, right on the other side of the alley.
And in fact, given that location, I believe we could accommodate six-foot at that area of the drive-through. You could, what I would suggest, if you want to make that a condition of approval, to say in the course of site plan, review and approval, the SIP process, that staff ensure fencing adequate to screen headlights from adjoining properties is installed along the eastern property line.
And I don't know, I mean, four foot might be high enough, but I think, since it's going to be open till 10 and possibly 11, that's probably not a bad...
By code, I can't allow some part of it to be six-foot, but it's only that part that's rearward of the building. So that should address any turning movements, so I could do six-foot to that point. The four foot should address headlights as well, unless it's a high-profile.
Okay. Okay.
Another, another condition, if it's a concern for you, could be hours of operation. That acts, that alley is a public right-of-way, and staff does encourage the use of public rights-of-way for all property access. So we would encourage the continued use of that. And as he pointed out, there is an easement that they are subject to for the adjoining property.
Okay.
I'm available for questions.
Well, since I have mixed feelings, I am not going to make the motion or the second on this, so.
Chair will entertain a motion. Need to do something?
I'll make a motion to approve SU twenty point two nine one nine.
With any stipulations?
Be up to somebody with the second in that neighborhood, probably.
I wanted to mention staff and planning commission did have the two stipulations attached to that recommendation. I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
With those.
I'll, I'll second with, if we add the third with the fencing.
Fencing.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second with stipulation.
If we could clarify what the, get on the record what the stipulation is with regard to the fencing, maybe Marshall could come back up. I know he had, he had said something earlier. I do want to point out, the language in the special use permit section of code does authorize the council to establish the minimum height and other parameters of screening and to specify what that will be. So I do think there's authorization in there if the council wants to deviate from what would typically be required.
The language I'm suggesting would be to ensure the installation of fencing sufficient to screen headlights in the vehicle use area on the eastern side of the property.
Aye, sir. What language?
And what are the other two stipulations?
To allow the buffer on the eastern property line to be eight foot, which is three foot of their property, five foot of that right-of-way. We're gonna include the fencing in there as well now. And secondly, to limit their signage to that allowed by the UV Urban Village District, subject to permitting.
Okay. All right, for a second.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Motion to approve Ward, let's vote Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
No.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
I abstain. No.
You're saying no, or you're saying abstain, or you're saying yes?
No, I'll vote, well, it's already passed without me. I'll vote no.
SU point twenty point two nine one nine is approved. The vote is three to two. Thank you all. Thanks, Marshall. Ms. Bochamp?
Next, we have item SU point two oh point two nine six nine, Ward four, neighborhood twenty point one one. This is a public hearing. The request by Tom Glancy of Duncan Seawall Dock and Boatlift LLC, agent for owner Hal Will Hoyt, for a special use permit to extend an existing dock to total one hundred six feet in length into the Braden River. The property is located in River Isles at thirty-nine oh five Riverwalk Court, Bradenton, Florida, three four two oh eight, parcel ID number one one two seven one two three three zero three.
Marshall.
Thank you. And Marshall McCray again, Planning Community Development. This one's a far less complex item. You'll be glad to know, and I have a very brief presentation. Take this off. This is, again, a special use permit request for a dock. In this case, the dock is coming to you as a special use, not because it's on public property or across a public right-of-way, but because it's gonna exceed our dimensional allowance of eighty feet. They want to add on to an existing dock, extend it by thirty-six feet to get to a total of one hundred and six linear feet. This is to better reach navigable water and to add a boat lift for pontoon boat. Dock's about five hundred square feet in size and seventy feet long. The addition is to be at a hundred and forty-four square feet addition, and again, the length of one hundred and six linear feet. And the subject property is hard to pin out on this particular map, but it is identified here. We see the docking question here. Yeah, that map just didn't come out real well. And here we are identifying it here, under future land use of residential low density and the R1 zoning that is, of course, applied. As I mentioned earlier, it's a special use because it exceeds our maximum eighty-foot length. And you're provided some details illustrating how that addition will be accomplished and where it would end up placing the dock in the water. We are provided specific review criteria for docks, and we find in this case, many are not applicable. It is not attached to seawall. Side setbacks do meet the ten-foot minimum requirement. No need for a grant of easement because it's not on public property. The dock is compatible with the surrounding docks, that's for sure. And it will be subject to DEP permitting, which has already been obtained through the self-certification. The permit number's provided to you there. I could go to slide mode. So staff's recommendation is to approve the dock extension as requested, subject to the following standard conditions associated with docks. The dock must be kept in good working order and condition to not degrade from the value of nearby properties. Lighting must be limited to minimal lighting required to use the dock safely at night, switched on either automatically or manually. All other applicable state and federal permits must be obtained prior to developing it. And so that is our recommendation, and I'm glad to accept any questions. There is a public hearing required for this as well.
Do they have any questions, Mr. Marshall?
Mr. Mayor. Ms. McCray, I just want to make sure that by them extending this dock, they're not blocking anybody else's dock or ability to use the docks that they currently have and can get to navigable water from their own dock.
Absolutely. I believe this illustration helps you see that it's, there's really no, no dock gonna be impaired or impeded by this whatsoever. That's, you know, another factor of DEP's permitting as well, to make sure nobody's gonna interfere with someone else's.
Where your arrow is there, is that the clubhouse for the?
Correct. Clubhouse here.
So if the, if the clubhouse, if the River Isle ever came back and said, "Hey, we want a dock in there," would that impede them?
No, they, if they have right-hand rights, they certainly may propose that and provide it as compliant. We'll let them do it. If it's not, it'll have to come through as a special use.
And the reason for extending that is to get the, to navigable waters, because it's probably low in there?
Correct. Yes.
Any other question, Mr. Marshall? Marshall, thank you. To open the public hearing, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request, please come forward. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor. Come on, Tom.
My name's Tom Glancy. I'm with Duncan Seawall. My address is five oh five Ken Hubbard Road in Terracee. So I am the agent for this. And just again, maybe to clarify real quickly, a couple of questions that you had. It is just to get him into some navigable, not navigable water, but just some, basically usable water, so that he can have a boat lift to get the boat up and down. And so, as he's coming in and out, he's not just prop dredging and, you know, creating, basically creating a channel through the mud there. It is, it is quite shallow, as you can see. The, if the folks from the clubhouse there did decide to, there's actually an area off to the right that gets them to deeper water quicker. And I've actually spoken to them in the past about that. So they don't have any plans at this moment, but have entertained a different area for a dock. So, as he said, pretty straightforward, just really trying to get out to a little bit more useful area.
Have you, have you talked to the state or feds, or about any permits that they'd need?
Yes, we did get a self-certification through the DEP on this, because it's under five hundred square feet, you know, on there. You know, and it basically meets all of, all of the recommendations for a, for a DEP exemption, and therefore gets an Army Corps of Engineers exemption as well.
How much water is out there at the end?
We get them to about two and a half, three feet at low tide.
Is there an existing platform, it's shown in that picture, that's gonna remain?
Yeah, that'll remain. We're just adding a thirty-six by four finger pier to have the, just, just to, you know, to have the boat lift.
No platform out there for the?
No, there won't be any platform.
Should just be a lift on it?
Yeah, just to get to the lift, yeah.
That, two and a half feet, that's all the time?
That's, you know, that's probably at low tides, you know, just so that he can get, you know, get the boat on and off and not be a slave to the, to the, to the high tides. And it's a, it's a shallow draft pontoon, but, you know, it takes that.
That, there's a little channel there, it looks like.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Does that stay consistent, or is it just come and go?
They, they're pretty consistent over time.
Okay.
Yeah, mostly it gets, at least gets the back of the boat where the engine is and so forth into the deeper water. It's hard to see, but there is a little bit more of a drop-off right where we put the lift.
Do you have any questions, Tom? Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to this request? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve SU dot twenty dot two nine six nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any discussion?
If I could just clarify that, is also subject to, weren't there staff stipulations on that one as well?
Just to clarify.
Yeah, those three staff stipulations keep the dock in good working condition, so it's not to degrade its value. Keep lighting to a minimum and ensure that it's on a automatic or manual switch, and get other outside agency permitting as necessarily required.
Isn't that on all docks?
Exactly.
Okay.
We're okay with that motion and a second?
Yes.
Again, we have a motion and a second. No more discussion. Let's vote. Ward five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
SU dash twenty, twenty-nine sixty-nine is approved. Votes five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Ms. Bochamp?
Yes, under new business, Mr. Callahan is an item regarding the Housing Trust Group.
Yes, HTG here today? Okay. This is an item that came before us originally when we were looking at the Thirteenth Avenue site. HTG, along with others, were interested in looking at that. And when we shut down, for the most part, tax credit applications in that area, I know that they're looking at other tap, other tax credit application possibilities in this area. But particularly came to, to point the location that we see here. They have a brief presentation they wanted to show you about that. The main, the main focus of this is, as in the past, when there have been requests to offer up the local assistance, which is the four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, to aid and assist in making the application more desirable to Florida housing. This is what they are requesting from us. Please take a look at the presentation. It's a rather, the area, whether if they get site control, certainly could use a sprucing up. And as y'all know, we're really proud of what HTG did down at the Addison. So I can't picture it being anything other than a great-looking project if they are successful. So certainly, Delia, please.
Carl, when you say four hundred thousand, I think what we're talking about is a loan for four hundred thousand?
That's what the request is.
It's paid back with?
It's a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar low-interest loan for a period of three years.
That's, that's what I wanted to, so it's not really, it's a short-term bridge loan, basically.
It shows, it shows that we are committed
Right.
to, to them and to the project happening here.
Yes.
I'll go into more detail. Good morning. My name is Delia Tabora. I am a developer with Housing Trust Group, HTG. I'm not sure if my presentation.
They have a copy of this in front, if not, Delia?
Just to kind of know where I'm at. Okay. I'm a developer with HTG. We are the largest affordable housing developer in Florida. Thank you very much. And as Carl mentioned, I am here to search support for a site that we have determined would be great for affordable housing. Next, please. Do I control this? Just enter. Great. Thank you. Let's see. All right. So we have been in business for over twenty years. Our principals have over fifty years of experience in real estate, both residential and commercial. As I said, we are the top affordable housing developer in the state of Florida and top twenty in the United States. Part of the reason why we have been able to accomplish that is because we have a very large team dedicated solely to affordable housing, as opposed to some other developers that kind of have a large team doing everything. So this is one of our main focuses. We have over forty-seven properties in the United States that we own and manage and have built. Over forty of those are in the state of Florida, which is our hometown. And like I said, our, our large team makes it possible for us to have this success. And we are able to have a vertically integrated kind of process where we take something from raw land, which is what we have now, all the way through permitting, construction, leasing. We have our own property management company, and then we own the asset usually for the duration of that. And we have our own asset management arm as well. With that being said, more specifically, in the last four years, we have committed and focused in Manatee County. And that has been shown. We have submitted, I think, every single year for the last four years, at least one application in Manatee County. And we've been able to get two of those funded throughout that period. The first of which, as Carl mentioned, is the Addison, completed in twenty nineteen. It has been, it has, since lease-up, it has been ninety-seven and above occupancy. And even through the coronavirus right now, we've still seen occupancies above ninety percent, which is great, and it shows the great demand for housing that is more affordable. Oaks at Lakeside, which is in the county, it's getting completed right now in December. So all in all, we've been able to add a hundred and eighty units. With that being said, the site that I am bringing up here for support is one located less, like about three blocks south of here and one block east. So it's at that corner of Sixth Avenue and Ninth Street. I have had preliminary discussions with planning staff, shown them kind of the overall layout. And I have to say, I was happy to hear that they echoed a lot of the same reasons why I thought this site would be great and great for redevelopment. Some of, some of which are, for example, the fact that we'd be lining that street now and making it more pedestrian-friendly. I have also, after discussing with staff, kind of if you see on the bottom right corner, I'm trying to work on an alternative that still is anchored at that block, but completes the block a little bit further. So that would be, the, the added benefit to that would be that both corners would now be anchored by buildings and completes that kind of pedestrian environment there. Either way, I have, I've heard support for both of those options from planning, and that's because both of those options also are the same program, pretty much. So the program being proposed is approximately eighty units of affordable housing for seniors. So one person in the household has to be fifty-five and over. And the mix, the unit mix for this would be one bedrooms and two-bedroom apartments. And usually, that means one to two persons per household in these types of units for seniors. And then you have over there the, kind of the rent, the approximate rent. But I think more importantly than that is the range of income that we would be serving. So those, those AMIs that you see there translate to between eighteen thousand dollars a year to forty-eight thousand dollars a year that the residents would have to be making to be able to rent here. And I think that, that is a great range, kind of spot-on to what the majority of these seniors are seeing, especially with fixed income. And just to go over, so yeah, the, the rent ranges would be between eight hundred and a thousand for a one-bed, and between a thousand and twelve hundred for a two-bed, for the majority of the units, which is like eighty-five percent of those units. And then we have about fifteen percent of those, of the units for lower-income households, which earn at thirty percent AMI. So that translates to a rent of about four thirty to five So that translates to a rent of about 430 to 500 a month for those 15% of the units. I'll go over the amenities next, and these, these are just some conceptual kind of renderings to bring about the style and the overall character, um, that we would be proposing here. As I mentioned, well, actually, I don't think I mentioned it, but this is in Ward five and it's within the Bradenton CRA's area. And it is a very urban site. So it's sewn T5 urban core. And so a lot of the, um, characteristics that you see here are what is promoted within the city's zoning and, um, the, the CRA's, uh, plan as well. So, um, very important is that setback that we have from the street, um, which is zero to, to like very minimal setback. And what that does is that kind of makes the sidewalk, uh, more walkable and, and extends it to, to the edge of the building, creating, um, a more pedestrian environment and a safer environment with eyes on the street. We've also, um, we will comply with the transparency requirements that are necessary for that ground floor, um, and also for the upper floors, but the ground floor specifically, that would be where all of the amenities for the development would be located, such as the club room, the fitness center, um, the management and the leasing offices. Um, and that activates that ground floor as well. So as Carl explained, um, what the, the financing approach that we have for this 24 million project is to get 9% tax credits from Florida Housing and that would be bringing about $17 million in equity to the project. Um, and these are very competitive credits, of course, and this year, Florida Housing has made it so. One of the goals is for a, a development that shows, um, government support through a local government contribution, which can be a grant or a loan. And in this case, we are proposing a loan of that amount of 460,000 dollars. And, um, the payment of which, so right now, what, what I'm, what we are requesting for approval for is for, um, the city administrator to sign that form that you see there, which is the form that is included in the application that is due right now in November. And that form just, uh, is kind of expressing a, a commitment to provide it. The actual, uh, money doesn't have to be provided until, um, beginning of construction all the way to placed in service. So you have some time to kind of allocate the funds and, um, they can start being dispersed in 2022, which is when we approximate, approximately think construction would be beginning. And some of it can even be provided at the beginning of 2023, which is when construction would be finalizing. Um, I, that, that's all I have to say and I entertain any questions. I want to, um, also just thank you and, uh, thank the city because without their support for the Addison, a lot of that would have been almost impossible. And, uh, I, I, I hope that we can get support for this great site. So if you have any questions for me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess a statement and I guess a question. Uh, first of all, yes, I was on board, uh, with Jake and, uh, telling him we said hello. And, uh, he was, uh, one of the ones who came before us, uh, early on, uh, with the Addison and, uh, I, you know, it's in Ward five and, uh, I thank you for looking at another location within Ward five and, uh, senior housing this time, which is, I fall in that category now, but, uh, that's great. But I wanted to get that, that statement. You, it's a quality project and we need quality projects, uh, coming in to take care of, uh, some of our housing needs. And we, we talk about beds downtown and, uh, you know, that's gonna really be a good addition there. Um, one of the things too, we always talk about in this council, tax credits, and I, I just want to, it's sort of asking a question, but explain more about the type of, uh, tax credit. My understanding is that by the city showing an investment of 460,000 dollars, if it is approved, uh, it shows an investment for the type of tax credit, uh, program you're applying for. In the past, we've had, uh, what I call them a lottery style where it's, it's pretty much, uh, you draw the lottery and you get the project. So if you can explain to, uh, rest of council the way that particular tax credit would work, I'd appreciate it.
Of course. So yeah, there's two types of tax credits that, um, we, there's usually funding for. So there's the 9% and the 4%. Um, 9% provides a lot more equity, um, than the 4% credits. So, um, it's usually easier to make a deal work that way, but mainly, um, they are way more competitive in nature. So for the past years, it has been, as, as he explains it, um, very lottery-based, um, and, and random. Um, and they're trying to streamline that by determining these specific goals and they're kind of putting, uh, some of the responsibility in the municipality, so the cities and the counties to kind of, um, express their support through, through that monetary value of where they would like to see projects, um, like this selected. So the probabilities of funding are much higher if, if we're able to obtain this loan and show the support than if we were just, you know, lottery-based. Yeah.
Thank you. No more questions?
Do they also have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, we're just requesting support of this at this point in time. Um, we think that it can afford a, a real opportunity in the downtown area for a, a piece of property that has been underserved for, for quite some time, if they're able to put it together. I also think that the timing, that it's out of ways, gives us every opportunity to figure out exactly how to do it. It doesn't have to just be one source of funds. We can look at, at multiple ways of, of putting together the 460,000 when that time comes. So we are recommending support for this, at this particular...
Need a motion, Ms. Callahan?
The motion would be to support us, uh, authorizing us to sign the, the application for local government, uh, certification of contribution. Yes.
Hi.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, it's yours. Actually, I had a, I quit, I just jumped in as a question. So, um, this is just conceptual right now. Uh, we're talking about the Ice House Block, right?
It's a piece behind, uh, Ernie Marshall's offices
Ernie Marshall.
and behind the scooter shop that's there at, at ninth and...
Yeah, and then one scenario, uh, we got scenario A, which uses the, the, the green field to the south and scenario B, which actually goes over to ninth, there's...
Yeah, I think this is all about site control for them. Um, where they can get site control, uh, most easily, you know? In the past, it's been looking at our pieces of properties for the most part and, and how do we help accommodate that or, or, uh, to get, asking us for site control. In this instance, it's their responsibility to get site control over whichever properties they decide to go forward because they're gonna have to show that in their application. So I think it's scenario A or B. I, I think when you look at either one, both of them are, are nice. Scenario B that comes right down Manatee Avenue is really cool, or, you know, Manatee Avenue East is really cool. But if they can't get site control, then that can't make that happen. So I think it's just showing what their desires would be. I think both of them are, are, are very nice opportunities if they can make it, make a go of it.
Okay.
And our, the beauty of it us is, you know, usually we're worried about how long something's getting tied up. They're just running this through the application process. It's not our decision how long things get tied up, it's just whether we'll offer the contribution. Okay. Sorry, Hal.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of HTG for a low-interest loan to support their senior housing tax credit application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
Votes is approved, the votes five to zero. Uh, Ms. Bochamp, any unfinished business?
No, sir.
The NPO folks will be back?
Um, yes, evidently she had to leave. She said she got caught in the lane closure traffic on Manatee Avenue, so apologize, but we'll call her and reschedule.
Is it DOT problem?
The irony wasn't lost.
Council reports, Mr. Gallo.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Councilwoman Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October, as many of us know, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I'd like to remind everyone, because men can get breast cancer too, uh, to do as the slogan says, take your life into your hands. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rolfe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just want to give a report in the sense there was an email that was put out by, um, Ms. Bochamp about the, uh, executive search. Um, just got a few more applicants come in today. Um, just to fill everyone in, uh, although we've received a lot of applicants, this is for the CRA, uh, position, there just isn't any, anybody coming in with what we're, what we're looking at as CRA. I, I think for the most part, I, I, I think some people are assuming CRA must be some kind of medical, uh, because most people have medical administration. Uh, so somehow we've got a disconnect going on there. Um, I got a barista, uh, manager, uh, that applied. So, um, but anyway, we're, we're really gonna have to figure out a way to, uh, get some different kind of advertising out there for this position. Um, I know we just started, but we're, we're certainly not hitting the right market. So I just throw, threw that out there, we can't really discuss that, that's CRA thing, but I just want to report on, we received a lot of applicants, but none are, none are in our criteria mode, so.
We have advertised in our normal places, plus on the FRA website, but if you have additional ideas, we are certainly open to starting that as soon as possible for you.
Yeah.
Mr. Rolfe, I did share the information with the dean of, um, urban and regional planning at Florida State University because with their public policy programs that they have, they may have contacts with someone as well.
That would be nice. Okay, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Anderson?
Uh, nothing to report.
Ms. Burd?
Nothing to report.
Me neither. Jim and, or, Ms. Bochamp, anything?
I was just gonna mention briefly, you may have noticed that Tamra's got some new digs here. Um, we're preparing for the capability of the Zoom meetings. We've got the Zoom computer, we've got cameras onsite now. We have one piece of audio equipment that has to arrive before we can actually get it going and that's supposed to be installed October 26th. So we'll go ahead, we're gonna learn how to use it and we'll probably do a demo if any of you are interested in seeing how it will work, but we're very close to accomplishing that. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm gonna comment. Zoom.
Sorry.
I think, I think that's my middle name now. Harold Zoom. But, uh, it's, it's so much of it and I, I think it's, uh, with the COVID-19 and some of the complications with meetings and so forth, I think it's something that's gonna be around for a while, but, uh, yeah, I'm glad we're moving in that direction now. Thank you.
It took a long time and I apologize for that, but getting the equipment has been a nightmare, so we're almost there though.
All right, thank you.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Burd. I had six Zoom meetings in one day.
I average two a day.
The only thing good about Zoom is the stock price.
Yeah.
Jim, anything?
Uh, just real quick, wanted to let, uh, you all know that I'll be on vacation next week and I'll be available by, uh, phone or email, but, uh, I will be out of town and our assistant director will be able to assist you if any emergencies arise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, anything? Chief?
Mm-hmm.
Carl?
I have two different things.
Uh-oh.
Not a bad one.
Yeah.
A few, couple weeks ago, we were, I was reading, uh, Florida League of Cities notes, which is very important when they come across, it's great news. And we noted that, uh, that Hillsborough County had given money through their CARES Act and, you know, they were a large county that received a lot of money for their CARES Act. And that they were giving monies to, um, to Steinbrenner Field for spring training and they were giving money to Amalie Arena to help them with their COVID protection practices and things that they could do to upgrade, upgrade those facilities to make sure that they were, were safer to utilize. Uh, with that, Jeff and I got together and talked about what those opportunities may be with the Pirates. Okay, they put together with their consultants a proposal of what they would need to do over at, uh, Lee Com Park to make it safer for patrons, which is primarily a, um, their water closets, their urinals, their, their faucets to make them, uh, touchless so that when you go in, we can eliminate a lot of those things, a lot of the Plexiglas surrounding, um, their, their dining where they're, you're ordering food and then point-of-sale locations to be able to make it, uh, more touchless opportunities there. And then some general cleanup and, and things associated with it. So we went to Manatee County and asked them if there were similar funds available at Manatee County. And luck would has it, there are similar funds that were available. We talked to Karen and to Sherry, they expedited this, we, we, we got a proposal to them about what you're seeing here and within a day, they turned it around and said, yes, they think that this qualified for, for monies that were available. You're seeing the request there is $225,000 through CARES Act funding. The things that I want to be careful to point out is that it is, money we're requesting is specifically available for governments. It's not taking away monies that would be available for the general public for those, or for businesses that are asking for funds. You notice yesterday at the county, you probably didn't notice, we, we look and we see things pop up. Yesterday at the county commission meeting, the last item on their agenda was approval of this particular item for us and then also for, um, upgrades or similar things at the convention center. So they're doing both of those. Uh, so we submitted this, they are, they are approved, typed items, we're very pleased with that, we'd like to go. And there are a couple caveats with this, so it has to be done quickly, has to be done very quickly. Um, to ensure that you don't lose out on the money, we, you need to make sure that it's done prior to December 31st, which for us really means prior to Christmas break. So by the third week of December, which creates some problems getting it all done really quickly. So that's where my ask comes in to y'all, is that it, under code of ordinances and, and our administrative code of ordinances on purchasing, it's code section 2, 237-dash-two or print two, which allows for council to waive our normal bidding procedures. Okay? And not, and what I'm asking you, because timing is critical on this and I think in order not to lose these fundings and make sure that these things can happen, we're asking you to waive our normal bidding procedures so that we can go out, uh, acquire a contractor that can get this done, get it installed and get it paid prior to the deadline in early December. Um, we think it's doable, we've talked to some people already, it's doable, but I wanted to make sure I went on the record and I requested that from you all, because going through a detailed bid process for, and this is not a major amount for construction projects, uh, could put us in jeopardy of being able to get this done. So I'm requesting your approval to waive those bid procedures at this point, things we still want to do to make sure we're saving all taxpayers' money. Because it's coming from the feds doesn't mean it's not taxpayers' money. It may be future taxpayers, but it's still there. We want to make sure that we can ensure that we're, we're taking advantage of the sales tax exemption for us doing it, so those contracts running through us to make sure that we can do that and save at least the sales tax and then expedite this and, and turn payment around very quickly.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Callahan, is it possible, and I know this is a short timeframe, but is it possible that this could be done prior to Blues Fest?
Agree.
We're trying. That's the whole goal, is to get it done as quick as possible. I mean, that's, the, the Pirates are trying to set and get ready to go. I mean, this just came up within the last two weeks. Uh, it's, that's the issue with it. We'd love to have it by then, that, that would be ideal. Um, certainly, I think a priority would probably be sinks, you know, the things that we can get, that's if we can get the plumbers in to get those things done. It's just getting them onsite and getting them installed. And it may be, because the size of crowd is not gonna be universally large, there may be certain areas that we can get done, because it's not gonna be a 7,000 or 9,000 crowd like a spring training game would be. There may be areas that we just say, look, the whole right field stands got done, this whole area got done, yes.
Do these areas first and then the outlying area is second.
Yes, that may be an opportunity. We'll check with Jeff on that.
Yeah, um, I don't have any problem with your, uh, uh, waiving the bid pro, I just wanted to clarify those. This is the CARES Act. I noticed that the county had a, a pretty big chunk, I think it was like 17 million or something like that, and we, we had a very minor amount.
We have a minor amount.
This is coming out of the counties?
Coming out of that. What we do is have an inter-local agreement that we can request fundings through. This is going through that inter-local agreement to request this step outside of that.
Well, is this, is this including our minor amount or just coming out of their massive amount?
This is coming out of their massive amount.
Okay.
If you look at yesterday, they went through a whole presentation. Uh, it's unfortunate, but they're having trouble getting the net message out as to how to spend the monies. You know, they, they listed the four categories, I think Karen Stewart kind of went through them at their meeting to talk about the first category, the second category, the PPP, where you can go to request the monies, because they're trying to get this out on the street. And it's the same message we have here. And it's the same message we have here. We would love our residents, it's not strictly county money, we wanted to make sure that was clear when they advertised these next fundings, that it was available for everybody in the county. Not City of Bradenton, we're in the county. So don't, don't worry about that. Go apply if you're a city, if your business is within the city. The county is still your go-to entity for this. So we'll help get that message out if they call us. But this is a, is a, a priority and a, and a really quick turnaround for us, so.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with the statement as far as the expediting the, everything, if you can, before Blues Fest in December. We all want to be, you know, as safe as possible. And in saying that, I'd like to make the motion that we waive all the, I guess, normal purchasing.
And that's what the ordinance says.
Right.
Section two says that you guys would agree to do that.
And the total request, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
The, the thing is, we got up to two fifty. So there, this was their proposal, the county authorized, their request was two fifty. So it could be up to two fifty.
Up to two fifty then.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, to take the money. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. Word two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
And I really, and I really appreciate you doing this, and I wanted to do this so that Jim didn't have to go and face Ralph, who is insistent upon our procedures, which is great. But, you know, it gets him off the hook, knowing that we were going directly to try to do this. And the second item is, I don't know if you all have been copied, I think you have been on an email talking about Ward Temple's parking lot, Yosemite Baptist Church parking lot and all of that. And I want to let you know that what is being discussed is not what is going on over there. Certainly, Sheriff's Office has requested through Ward Temple to try to put a basketball court in on Ward Temple's property. Okay? Glenn, I think, is confused as to, he put out there that, well, we should be more cognizant of affordable housing, and we should make, why is the corner fifty by a hundred not included in this? I can't believe you guys are so egregious in all the things you do. Well, in reality, this goes back over twenty years ago. I pulled up the minutes from two thousand, when Jerry West brought forward the idea that that corner fifty by a hundred had previously been given to Yosemite Baptist Church. It was their property for parking. Now, what happened in never getting the deeds and things gone around, I have no idea. But that, I think it had been given back when MLK process was going on, and they encroached up kind of close to the church and gave that land as a swap in lieu of, I don't have documentation of that effect, but I want to let you know that, look, guys, it is not our property. It shows on a property appraiser, a City of Bradenton, we've given two deeds over the years, that for some reason, the property appraiser has not switched that away from us. We are continuing to correct that issue. But the fact that we're not paying attention to affordable housing is hogwash. That's, it's not our property to say grace over. So just wanted to let you know that. So when we continue to get drowned with emails that just put a position out rather than fact, I wanted to let you know what's really going on.
I, you know, I, I don't know, I didn't get forward to that. But, you know, in lieu, you're describing who we're, we're really talking about. Over the years, yes, it's been that piece of property, whether I'm talking with the pastor at, at the time, from Yosemite Baptist Church, or Ward Temple over the years. And I will say that I was in discussion in Ward Temple, and I hear that the person that wrote the email is working with Ward Temple on some projects over there. But the pastor at Ward Temple had a meeting with me and getting with, even with Sheriff Wells about the basketball court. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, what's going on. Didn't receive the email, but I'm just.
It came up at the end of last week. First, I think a parishioner of, of Yosemite.
Okay.
Was concerned that they were building a basketball court on their property.
Okay.
I, we sent code enforcement out to take a look.
It's further to the east.
Yes, it is. And, and so that confusion started, and that started the person who's working with Ward Temple and other things, saying that the whole property should be available to Ward Temple for affordable housing. And we just said, wait a second, you're blaming the wrong folks again. If those two churches want to get together and help figure that out, that's up to them, but we are out of the middle of this.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just an update, so.
Callahan, can we check with Mr. Hackney, make sure that he gets that straightened out?
We will continue. There have been two different deeds. The first one was recorded in seventeen, we know that, and we don't know why that ever, didn't ever happen. Most recently, we did another corrective deed last year to, to take care of the same thing. So we're, we're not sure what's going on over there. We will get it.
Since we share the same hairdresser, I'll be happy to.
We'll go over it. I'm not sure what's happened here, but we'll get it right. It's, you know, it, because I don't want it to look like it should be surplus property of ours. It's not ours. It hasn't been for a long time, so.